I am going to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have roll call. Start voting, please. Holly?
All councilors present, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, Holly?
There is not.
For now, Mayor, I'll make the motion with the approval the agenda is presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda approval? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have two cards here. One is Mr. Robert Pickett. Mr. Pickett, would you come to the podium and give us your name and your address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Robert Pickett. I live at 2721 First Street. And after, I want to speak on the ice rink. After the discussion in the last meeting, we talked a lot about cost, and I think that's very good to talk about. But I started asking myself, you know, why do we do what we do? Why do you guys do what you do? As a board president for San Luis Valley Hockey and also a coach, I started thinking, you know, what's the worth? What makes this worth it? And I start to think of kids that might not fit in anywhere else, might not fit in, you know, in school. All of a sudden, they come to our program and they're part of a team, much like they would. Maybe they fit in in basketball. Maybe they fit in in, you know, honors or anything like that, honor society. So what I want to ask you guys is what's, you know, not what's the cost of this facility, but what's the worth going to be to us? You know, how many children can we get maybe off the street and off of drugs? How many adults can we get that have just moved here? How many can we get them to stay in our city? You know, what makes it worthwhile for them to stay here? So just ask yourselves that. You know, why do you guys want to live here? And when I look out that window, that's one of the reasons. You know, I like to see mountains. There's no way I could live out in Nebraska or somewhere. And that's why I also think this rink is at a good location, geographically in our city and geographically in our entire region. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Next up, we have Josh Kronk, and I hope I pronounced that properly. Would you please come to the podium? Give us your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Josh Kronk. I live at 208 Edgemont, Unit 961. It's in the dorms at the college here. I'm the head ice hockey coach for the U-18 San Luis Valley Hockey Team. A little about my background. My grandpa actually started the Air Force Hockey Team up at the academy up in the Springs. Hockey's been my background ever since I was, two weeks after I was able to walk, I was playing hockey. Seeing some of the kids right now, it's, we have some guys that are experienced and some guys that are not experienced, and that's due to the facility we have right now. We haven't been able to, it's hard to train some of the kids, both young and in high school, with when we only have a three-week season. It's, not only that, though, we, at the college, we have about, we have pickup hockey every Wednesday and Sunday night, but we have about anywhere from 10 to 15 college students come down and participate in open hockey. We've got, all got together, and we want to start a club hockey team at the college. We're actually the only college in the RMAC besides CSUP that doesn't have a club hockey team. We want to start a team, but due to our facility right now, we are unable to do that with the, once again, the amount of how long our season is. So not only would it be good for the community as well as the upbringing of kids throughout the valley, getting them off the streets, exactly what Rob said, but for also the college as well. We'd be able to bring in some more athletes as well and get them involved with the community, have public skate, open skate, have kids in high school be able to interact with some of the college students as well. I've talked to numerous individuals at the college, and they're all for it. They want to see the hockey build up, and just this season alone, with my interactions with the team, it's been awesome. It's been seeing some of the guys get off of drugs, seeing some of the less privileged kids make new friends, and actually feel like they're part of a family, unlike what they're not feeling at home. So thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kronk. Next, we have follow-up. Is there any follow-up, Council? Any?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor. Josh and Robert, I would like to thank you all very much for coaching and volunteering in the community. One of the best ways to give back to a community is volunteering. I've had an opportunity this past year to see you all in action, to see you out there with the youth and making sure that they were doing what they were supposed to do on the ice, and hopefully we'll be able to look forward to seeing you all do this in a new facility sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman, and I can just echo that as well. Thank you for your volunteers, and volunteers are hard to find, but we really, this community really appreciates what you do for us. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll move on to ceremonial items in tonight. Chief, you are here to introduce Corporal Rendon.
I am, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight, I get the pleasure of again announcing another promotion within our department. Alan Rendon, he will give you his full bio, explanation who he is, and introduce himself, but he's been with us for 10 years. He was promoted on April 1st of this year, and it just goes to show that we have officers that do stay here a long time, and it shows that our training and experience does come through and show through the type of training that we're giving our officers. So tonight, Alan, if you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Ms. Brooks, Mr. Schreischel, Ms. Martinez, my name's Alan Rendon. I was born and raised in the Soundless Valley in Sanford, Colorado, where I attended Sanford Public Schools and graduated from it in 1994. In the winter of 95, while attending Adam State College, I moved to Alamosa and became employed at Soundless Valley Community Corrections for approximately seven years. I also worked at Youth Track here in Alamosa. On October of 2004, I was hired by the Alamosa Police Department as Animal Control Officer. Shortly after, I enlisted in Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy. Here in Alamosa, I was part of the first class that they ever had here. I graduated the academy in September 2005. I then tested for patrolman position and was hired by Chief John Jackson in May of 2008. During my employment with ABD, I had become certified as a TASER instructor and field training officer. Other than that, I'd just like to thank the city and most importantly, the chief folks, Captain Mestes, Captain Anderson, and all the PD staff, my girlfriend, Kirsten Garcia, for trusting and supporting me in my promotion. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Corporal Rendon. And Council, do we have any comments? Counselor Gregel?
I guess I'll start. Officer Rendon, I appreciate now that you described all the ambition to keep training and training and getting to the position that you are in, it seems like you just want to continue to move forward and that, and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate you wanting to serve our community and protect our community. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Corporal Rendon, that sounds good, doesn't it? Yeah. I remember when you were the animal control, so I've kind of watched you through. Real proud of you, proud of the police department. You guys are doing a terrific job. It seems like we say this quite a bit, but you guys are, you're doing an excellent job. See your friends back there making fun of you. That's a sign of good team, good camaraderie. You guys are in such a good position as what we've seen in the past. I just appreciate everything you guys do, and I'm happy for you. Thank you for doing what you do.
Counselor Coleman?
Corporal Rendon, one thing I like about Corporal Rendon is every time you see him in the community, he's always smiling. And I think that goes a long ways in the community when people can see you always smiling. I see you in the community a lot, and thank you for sharing that smile with others because sometimes it's the only sunshine they see all day. So keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Corporal, congratulations on your promotion. It's always nice to see that we've promoted from within. You've moved up through the ranks quickly, and your credit to this department. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Counselor Stefano?
I also would like to congratulate you. I've seen you grow a lot from when I first met you. Congratulations, doing a good job.
Appreciate it.
And all you guys do a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Corporal Rendon, I've known you for many years. And the pride you feel today is the pride that we feel for you. You and Chief Oaks and the entire police department are a definite positive aspect in our community. We applaud you for that, and we applaud you for the personal growth that you are experiencing. Thank you for being here. I know you're a very kind and conscientious individual. I've known you for many, many years, and good luck to you in your new position, and congratulations, Chief, to your entire department.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Who is here to visit with us? Ah, yes. Please identify yourselves for the record and your addresses, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Catherine Salazar, and I'm the Director for the Department of Human Services.
And I'm Kathy Swazow. I'm a supervisor in child protection and been there a minute or two.
Thank you for being here, ladies.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Our purpose to be here this evening is twofold. First of all, hopefully you have a proclamation in front of you. I believe my staff sent it ahead. And just to make you aware, that April is National Child Abuse Month, and in the month of April, we generally kind of take, do the roadshow. We see the Board of County Commissioners and we see City Council in terms of advocating for and making our community aware of child abuse, and April is that designated month. And so with that in mind, I'm having, that this has been my first time here before you. Do you read the proclamation? Would you like me to read the proclamation? What's the protocol?
I have it here, and if you don't mind, I will read it and sign it, and we will join you down to present it to you.
Very good. That being said, may I take one more moment of your time? The second reason for our visit this evening is that in January of this year, back in 2012, Governor Hicken Looper announced the Child Welfare Plan, and it was called Keeping Kids Safe and Families Healthy. And with this proclamation, developed House Bill 1271, which went into law in May of 2013. With this House Bill, there was three items that was set out in this Child Welfare Plan. And the first item was that we would develop a Child Welfare Hotline. And what that encompasses is generally when anybody within the community wanted to report child abuse and/or neglect, usually they called the county departments. They have, they've kind of won up that, and now we have a statewide hotline number. And Ms. Kathy is going to hand out those items, if you'd be amenable that she would approach. And anybody who is interested in reporting child abuse can still continue to call our office. Our number, we have a designated hotline number for Alamosa County, which is 589-7805. And then the date hotline number is 1-844-COLORado-4-Kids. And that number is 1-844-264-5431. And so in terms, again, in view of Child Abuse Month, I'm sure some of you on television, on radio, you're going to be some, see some public awareness announcements regarding reporting child abuse. And so Ms. Kathy also has some ribbons in terms of the Child Abuse Awareness Month. So I would just highly encourage you that at any point in time, you, the community, are aware of child abuse. There are several ways, and the intent is that we get those calls, and I think the slogan on TV is dial the number, we'll make the call. So we highly encourage our citizens within Alamosa County that if you are aware of child abuse and/or neglect, that you be in contact with us. So other than that, this evening, that's all I have. If you should have any questions, please feel free to call our department. Please feel free to call me. I'm always available.
Thank you, Catherine. And with that, I will read this proclamation proclaiming April Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I hope I don't get my tongue tied up over here. Anyway. Whereas the City of Alamosa joins businesses, government agencies, nonprofits, and dozens of other organizations across Colorado in observing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas all children have the right to be safe and have a healthy childhood, to live in a loving and nurturing environment, and to be secure and well-cared-for in their homes, schools, and communities, and whereas children are key to the City of Alamosa's future but are also our most vulnerable, thus everyone plays a role in protecting children from harm. And whereas through the new statewide Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline, all citizens can and should report suspected child abuse and neglect by calling 1-800-CO-4-KIDS or in Alamosa 58719-589-7805. And whereas we thank the many childcare providers, service providers, doctors, nurses, parents, police officers, social workers, teachers, organizations, and all others who dedicate their lives to caring for and protecting children, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening families because strong families and safe, healthy children reduce the likelihood that abuse and neglect will continue into the next generation, and whereas we encourage families to surround themselves with a strong support system comprised of friends, loved ones, and neighbors, and remember to lean on them when times get tough. And whereas we ask all citizens of Alamosa to observe this month with programs and activities that help kids soar, keep families stable, and support a healthy community in a world-class city where everyone matters, and be it resolved that April 2015 is hereby proclaimed as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Alamosa, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Alamosa this day on behalf of the Alamosa City Council and the Mayor Joseph P. Lucero. I will sign this and will present this to you. Gentlemen?
Welcome to the Council's meeting. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Hi, great, Catherine's over there. This is great. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you? Yes. Mr. Mayor?
How are you? Thank you. I'm John Gosh for the AM. You've been on the phone a long time? Hi, great, Catherine's over there. This is great. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you? Yes. Mr. Mayor?
How are you? Thank you. I'm John Gosh for the AM. You've been on the phone a long time? Hi, great, Catherine's over there. This is great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. It's great to meet you. I'm the City Council. You too. I'm the first. Thank you. There's a few of these that you brought to the conference. Part of it did bring enough.
Thank you.
Catherine, we have more at the office. Please just step in, probably the library will probably do a job on that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Arbor Week Proclamation, and we have three members of our tree board, our boreal board here. Would you please step to the podium and introduce yourselves and your addresses for the record, please?
Good evening, Council and City Associates and Citizens. Hi. I'm Marilyn Loser of the Alamosa Tree Board. I live at 507 Pike's Peak. I have two fellow tree board members here, Audrey Lu and Adam Moore.
I'm Audrey Lu. I live at Stadium Drive. Yeah.
Adam Moore, 117 Edison.
I'd like to briefly talk about our two plantings that we're having this week that are public plantings. We did receive another Colorado Tree Coalition grant that we're very pleased about. Part of that money went to a tree inventory, so it's a tree inventory of street trees, which in general are those between the curb and the sidewalk, park trees and cemetery trees. Also, in conjunction with that and working with the Department of Parks and Recreation, Heinz Bergen, 17 trees will be planted. We'll be planting four in the parks during the public plantings. The other 13 will be planted because they're, at other times, because they're scattered all around. I will leave some of these at the podium. I already passed them out to the Council. At Diamond Park, at 3:00 PM, we'll be planting two golden willows in a very wet part of the park. And then on Saturday morning in Carol Park, we'll be planting two trees at 9:00 AM, and we would love any of you to join us. I'll leave these at the podium. This is also Tree City 25th Year Celebration. Adam Moore, who, while he's on the tree board, is also our state forester, so I'm going to let him take over.
Being Tree City USA for 25 years is not a small feat. Tree City USA has been around since 1976, so for a majority of the time the program has been around, you guys have been an active member of the Tree City USA program. A few statistics for the state, just to indicate how difficult this is, is there are 95 Tree City USAs in the state of Colorado. There are 48 that have been in it less than 25 years. This year, there are a total of seven that are celebrating their 25th year, so six more in addition to you guys. There are also amazingly 39 communities that are celebrating more than 25 years of Tree City USA. These numbers, though, do not take into account some towns that may have been in Tree City USA and for whatever reasons may no longer be part of the program anymore. So a little background on Tree City USA, is there's a lot of different reasons that communities may decide to become Tree City USA. It can be either just a framework for helping them decide how they want to manage their urban forests that they have. It can be just a venue for making sure that the public is educated about the trees that there are throughout the city and how they manage them. It could be a simple matter of public image or citizen pride within the community. And Audrey has been with the city on the tree board for about as long as the city has been a tree board member, and ironically, I've not had a discussion with the tree board on why 25 years ago you guys decided to become Tree City USA. But from my interactions attending the tree board meetings, I would say part of it is you guys wanting some advice from the citizens on, just the input for how to manage the forest and some concerns that you may have. But then I can also notice that sense of pride in there, and that you want to show that you're caring for the trees you have and that you're a city that cares for what you have and the resources, whether it's the infrastructure that everybody thinks of with the water resources, whether it's going into your house or coming out of your house, or the roads you drive on, but also the resources that are naturally around you, such as the parks and the trees. So to stay Tree City USA, there's four qualifications. One is they have to have a tree board or a department or a forest personnel that is in charge of and taking control of the trees. So what the city has done is they have the tree board that they use for meeting that standard. They have to have a tree ordinance that says that there's somebody or some entity, such as the tree board, that says this is who is going to be helping us look after the trees. You guys have that? And then here's the one that sometimes people find difficult, and you guys have managed to do it every year, is $2 per capita invested into the trees. So that doesn't necessarily mean that $20,000 are spent on new trees every year, but in some manner, there's maintenance and money being spent towards the trees. So the proper care around them, whether it's mulching around the base of the trees, whether it is putting the protective fences up around there for the infamous deer here in town, or any of the other maintenance efforts that the city recreation staff are doing. And then also, what we'll be getting to as well tonight, is our Arbor Day proclamation and an Arbor Day observance as well. So we'll have the proclamation tonight, and the plantings are going to be an observance where the citizens can get that education and can see the dedication that the city has and that you guys have towards the efforts and the trees here in the city. So along those lines, is on the 25th, every five years, you get a special flag associated with it. So we would like to present the 25th Anniversary Flag to you guys.
Very good.
In the past, these have been hung in the rec center, and I encourage you to hang these, once again, in the high visible location to show that dedication that you have had over the last 25 years.
Thank you, Adam and Audrey and Marilyn. And with that, I will read the proclamation, and we will go down and present it to you.
Take a photo.
Arbor Week Proclamation 2015.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that $20,000 are spent on new trees every year, but in some manner, there's maintenance and money being spent towards the trees. So the the proper care around them, whether it's mulching around the base of the trees, whether it is putting the protective fences up around there for the infamous deer here in town, or any of the other maintenance efforts that the city recreation staff are doing. And then also, what we'll be getting to as well tonight is our Arbor Day proclamation and an Arbor Day observance as well. So we'll have the proclamation tonight, and the plantings are going to be an observance where the citizens can get that education and can see the dedication that the city has and that you guys have towards the efforts and the trees here in the city. So along those lines is on the 25th, every five years, you get a special flag associated with it. So we would like to present the 25th anniversary flag to you guys.
Very good.
In the past, these have been hung in the rec center, and I encourage you to hang
these once again in the high visible location to show that dedication that you have had over the last 25 years.
Thank you, Adam and Audrey and Marilyn. And with that, I will read the proclamation, and we will go down and present it to you. Arbor Week Proclamation 2015. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and planted more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees in Alamosa increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, wherever they are planted, they are a source of great joy and renewal. And whereas Alamosa has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 25th year and twice a recipient of the Growth Award by the National Arbor Foundation, and has a strong desire to continue its tree planting and maintenance ways, now therefore I, Joseph P. Lucero, mayor of the city of Alamosa, on behalf of the Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim April 14 to April 20, 2015 Arbor Week in the city of Alamosa, and I recommend all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and maintain trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This 15th day of April 2015, I will sign this, and I will ask Rusty Johnson and our present tree board member, Michael Stefano, to present this to you, because Rusty was a tree board member for liaison for many years, weren't you, Rusty?
Yeah.
So would you two gentlemen do the do the favor for council?
Appreciate that.
Council?
Hi.
Yeah, you should hold this up in front.
Yes.
You can help move it off.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you, Joe. Probably going to be some comments.
Yes, absolutely. Gentlemen, we have comments for our tree board. Mr. Johnson.
I, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you guys and all you do. Tree board, I would be remiss to not mention Carol Scarlett and Dean Swift.
Yes, thank you.
Also, members of the tree board that aren't here tonight. Thanks for all you guys do. One of my favorite boards to be on. You guys are so much fun.
And I'm going to try to make it for one of the plantings.
I always try to. And thanks for your support. You guys do so much. And Heinz, make sure you pass on thanks to Solomon and Jeremy and the crew, because they do a terrific job preparing everything for the plantings and all that and do a terrific job. So thank you and your staff, and thank you guys.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I I agree totally with what Rusty said. It's an excellent board. Glad we have you. I was on there for a short time. Whenever you drive around Alamosa, you see your work, whether it's the cemetery, out at the golf course restaurant, down Sixth Street. You just drive around, you see these young trees. Cole Park. And like they say, the best time to plant a tree was 40 years ago or today. So I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I I will just echo their sentiments. Heinz, thank your your staff for all the wonderful things they do out at the cemetery. The other day, someone asked me how the trees were doing on State Avenue over by the airport, and I hadn't been out there. And it just so happened, day before yesterday, I decided to run out there and see how they were doing. And some of them are blooming very well, and some are late bloomers, obviously, but they all seem to be doing well. And so we appreciate everything the tree board does for us, as well as Parks and Rec. And so with that, I will, Counselor Stefano, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Adam, for your presentation. It's an honor to be on the board. I really love trees, and I know we're going to be planting some more. I took one last year. We planted over by the baseball park. So do we bring our own shovels, or?
We'll have some this time. There's only four trees we're planting.
Good to see you guys. Good job.
Counselor Coleman?
I too would like to thank the city staff as well as the tree board and the council members who participate. I want to thank you for enhancing the economic vitality of our community as a whole by making sure that we have the trees in our community. Thank you so much.
Counselor Gudiego?
Yes, I I also would like to echo what the rest of the council people have said, and and thank Audrey for hanging around. She's she's gone through a bunch of group of people and at my neighbor, you landed a good person when you landed my neighbor, because she loves trees. And Adam, for Adam hanging out with us from the forestry, it really brings a lot to our our group and stuff. And like Rusty said, the rest of the group, that it's a big team effort that everybody works together and beautifies our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. And so with that, we'll move on to regular business. I'm sorry, Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have three items. We receive March 2015 expenditure report, approved minutes of the regular meeting April 1st, 2015, and receive March 2015 monthly reports. Council?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I move we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And so with that, we will move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Public Works, tonight we have a first reading on ordinance number four, 2015, and ordinance approving the annexation of the 2015 Tucker Wagner petition for the annexation of a tract of land located in fractions of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 9, Township 37 North, Range 10, East New Mexico Principal Meridian, Alamosa County, Colorado. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. Again, this is a first reading for the annexation of the 2015 Tucker Wagner annexation. This property, it's an enclave located between West 7th and West 8th Streets, west of Washington Avenue, and directly across West 8th Street from the new elementary school. City water and sewer are available on both the north and south sides of the property. You can see both sides of the property are are served by paved streets, and the 8th Street portion of the project of the property was a part of last year's West 8th Street Improvement Program and was served with curb cuts and driveway accesses as at the request of the property owner.
Thank you, Pat. Council, do we have any questions of Pat? Counselor Gudiego?
Yes, I know we've we pretty much have discussed this, and it it has met the annexation part of it. And this is another step towards the getting the get it all straightened out, I guess.
Yes, sir.
There's no further questions. I'll make a motion that we passed on first reading, ordinance number four dash 21 05, and set it for a public hearing on is it May the 6th at 7:00 o'clock or soon thereafter?
I have a motion and a second on ordinance number four, 2015. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have Resolution Number 6, 2015, under Finance Amending Ordinance 13, 2014, for the 2015 budget. Thank you, Amanda.
The resolution in front of you encompasses three of our funds, our general fund, our enterprise fund, and our community recreation fund. The first part of our general fund is revenues that we're increasing. We're increasing our revenue by 165,000 to show the mineral impact grant that we got for our West 8th project. The second is $3,500 of reimbursement that we have received from the Training Foundation. In prior years, we have done this coming into the expense account, being that the Training Foundation has taken a more of a reimburse they're reimbursing more items to us. We've decided to track this differently because of the dollar amount associated with it now. So as the reimbursements come in, we'll offset the expenses and then bring the revenue and expenses to you for approval. Also, we will increase the expense side on the general fund by 6,600 to cover the costs that have been incurred for the Carol Street SID as far as engineering costs. On the enterprise fund, we are reallocating a budget that was put in in 2014. We had originally purchased the camera, came in, we had to return it. There was a length of time that went through, so we got the reimbursement for the original camera, had to go back and repurchase that. So we got the reimbursement for 36,000. The original budget was higher than that. The new camera did have to go in, was a little bit higher after purchasing it for so long. On our community recreation side, we are bringing in the revenue of the tree grant and the offsetting expense. Is there any?
Thank you, Amanda. Council, do we have any questions of Amanda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, mayor. Pretty straightforward, Amanda. Thank you. With that, I will move that we adopt Resolution 6, 2015, amending the 2015 budget.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 6, 2015? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
And next, we will move on to the Parks and Recreation, Proposed Ice Rink and Multi-Purpose Facility. Is that you, Heather?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is an item that has been discussed quite a bit, as as we shared last time. The team has been working on this for a few months to pull together the information. There was a presentation made to the recreation board following that. We had a work session with city council. Following that was an official presentation during a city council meeting. Since that time, staff has gone and and created this spreadsheet that, in all honesty, probably should have been presented the first time this was presented to council. It can clearly show what the anticipated funds are and and where they would would come from, and it highlights those expenses instead of trying to do that verbally. So for that, we apologize, but we do have this spreadsheet now. We've also presented this to the recreation board, so it can help them have a better idea as well. They again reiterated their support for the project and recommended that this financing be moved forward to allow us to apply for grants. The only other item before I go over this spreadsheet that has changed somewhat in our discussions is the site location. We are still recommending that it is out by the recreation center, but in regards to what side it goes on, if we do achieve the grants that are necessary to to match this and council gives the go-ahead to move forward, we would recommend still testing both sides of the recreation site to see what the soil is and not just go off of some assumptions. And so that is all still up in the air in regards to some discussion, get some information and and make that. It's still out at the rec center, but on which side do we cut up some of the grass? Or do we go on the other side, or is that not very good soil? So those things we would still want to explore. In regards to the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, in my opinion, there's two areas that I think council should look at. The first one is what your comfort level is with our fund balances. And the two funds that are listed there is the Community Recreation Fund and the Conservation Trust Fund. These are the two funds that we can use the the revenue to fund this type of project. These are also the two funds that would fund projects that would compete with this project. So if you're thinking about should these funds go to this, or should they go to something else, these are the two that would fund those. For example, we have a cemetery fund. That's not something we would use. And consistent with similar discussions, my recommendation is to stay away from the general fund. So these are the two funds we would look at for funding this type of project. Right, what you can see there is the the current balance. And I don't. The current balance is 318,920, and then 69,406 for a combined total of 388,326. Council had previously earmarked 48,000 to apply for a GoCo grant, which we were unsuccessful in getting. So you could continue that dedication. Technically, it's not really earmarked at this point in time, so you could continue that dedication. When we looked at the financing for this project, staff's recommendation would be that we use 100,000 from the fund balance and finance for a short-term interest, the 400,000 for financing. So that 52,000, there's nothing magical about the split that we did there. We could easily take it all out of the Community Recreation Fund. We could take more out of the Conservation Trust Fund. The end goal we had was to get the 100,000 from the fund balance. In regards to what the operating, and this is the second area that I think council should look at, when we did our budget and we listed what we anticipated the revenue to be minus what our expenses were budgeted, these are the amounts we anticipated adding to the fund balance. In essence, these were the additional revenue that was not allocated towards anything that should go towards the fund balance. We adjusted slightly the previous number we gave you in regards to the ongoing operational costs. So this 41,490 is something that would not go away. It could go up, it could go down, depending on how the programming works and how the actual operational costs come out, but there was about 3,400 that we had not included in revenue. So this is slightly lower than the number we had given you previously on what we thought the net impact was going to be from an operational perspective. This next number, the 66,720, is the seven-year term, 4.5% interest rate for financing 400,000. And then you can see, if we take it out of the Community Recreation Fund, it would leave essentially about 40. If you combine the two funds, we would add about 5,570. So the the question then, when you're looking at this, is here's what your your fund balance would be, would be 288,326, and we would anticipate moving forward, adding 5,570. Now, the other piece that goes along with this is this is where our current operations are. So if there was a need to grow them, then obviously, we would not have as much flexibility. If for some reason we were to reduce, then you get more flexibility. In essence, these were the additional revenue that was not allocated towards anything that should go towards the fund balance. We adjusted slightly the previous number we gave you in regards to the ongoing operational costs. So this forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety is something that would not go away. It could go up, it could go down depending on how the programming works and how the actual operational costs come out, but there was about three thousand four hundred dollars that we had not included in revenue. So this is slightly lower than the number we had given you previously on what we thought the net impact was going to be from an operational perspective. This next number, the sixty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, is the seven-year term, four-point-five percent interest rate for financing four hundred thousand. And then you can see if we take it out of the Community Recreation Fund, it would leave essentially about forty dollars. If you combine the two funds, we would add about five thousand five hundred and seventy. So the the question then, when you're looking at this, is here's what your your fund balance would be would be two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-six, and we would anticipate moving forward adding five thousand five hundred and seventy. Now, the other piece that goes along with this is this is where our current operations are. So if there was a need to grow them, then obviously we would not have as much flexibility. If for some reason we were to reduce, then you get more flexibility. The other piece that goes along with this is this is assuming that the CIP is also still funded. This does not take out the CIP. So those projects that council has already approved and listed in the CIP would still be done. Now, obviously, every year you review the CIP, you might make some minor changes, but we would also then be making sure this all lines up. But this still allows us to have those projects that are listed in the CIP. And at this point, I can answer any questions, and those that I can, I'm sure Heinz or some of our other partners in the audience can help us answer as well.
Counselor Vieggo?
I guess I'll start here. On your current fund balance, that is created after you take all your programs, whatever monies you have collected during the year in each program, and then subtract the expenses, and that leaves that amount, three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty, is that correct?
The three hundred and eighteen is if you look at what is actually sitting in the account right now. The hundred and eight is what we would anticipate adding to it.
Okay, maybe that's the that's what where you get that figure at, right?
The hundred and eight, yes. We take the revenues minus the expenses that left we anticipated that would leave a hundred and eight thousand to add to the three hundred and eighteen above.
Okay, because what I was trying to say is that forty dollars, is that going to remain forty dollars all the time? I think that that if the programs are there, that could grow, right, the forty dollars? Instead of just forty dollars every every year for seventy-seven years?
First, so it is for seven years, you know, and again, if you wanted the lease payment to be to take out sixty-four thousand and take two thousand out of the Conservation Trust Fund, but the total amount that we would be adding to the two different fund balances would be five thousand five hundred and seventy.
See, I understand that, but the forty dollars itself, it's not something that's going to be there. That could grow, right?
That that could grow.
Amanda's hair knobbing, yes, back there.
That that could grow, or it could be that that could reduce, and we need to pull from the Conservation Trust Fund.
Okay. And also, what is it you're asking of us today?
Thank you, thank you, and that's a very important question. Obviously, at the last meeting, council did have a vote. My impression from that vote is that it was more of a general direction that to move forward in exploring this project, to move forward in exploring the grants.
Correct.
The vote that we actually really need from council to apply for the grants is we need to be able to say we have dedicated funds for this project. So the vote that we would be requesting tonight is that if the other eight hundred thousand can be brought in either through grants or outside funding, that council is in support of this financing structure, the hundred thousand with the fund balance we have right now, and the financing of the four hundred thousand. So we would want an official vote on that for the project.
So what you're saying is if these grants ain't put together, the project does not exist exist, right?
That is correct.
Correct. Because what I want, and you mentioned it yourself, is the fact that this project right here, everything should come out of recreation funds. General fund should never be touched for something like this, in my personal thing. You know, if we have the money for recreation programs, it should come out of recreation. The general fund balance, I think, is is there for streets and other infrastructure deals, so if with something like this, you know, if they can if they can put together the grants, I I wouldn't have a problem with doing something like this, because we've done it before with the with the senior citizens and the Boys and Girls Club, where we kind of helped them out a little bit, and they went out there and did the late work and kind of put it together, so.
And to just add on for the general fund, in addition to the the philosophy you shared on where things should be come from, is also we have some big unknowns that could potentially be hitting the general fund as well, and that's in the water to meet the water regulations and the levy recertification.
And that's why I emphasize is if if the recreation fund cannot do this, it's not done. And my I that's what I feel personally, so.
Counselor Stefano?
Heather, I understand the GOCO grant didn't go through. Are we anticipating applying for more grants like with DOLA, or what is your?
Yes, so we recently turned in an application to DOLA for our comprehensive plan update. We have another grant we're looking to submit to Development Resources Group for the glass crusher, and then we have some other stuff scheduled out for DOLA as well. This one would we would fit into that, and as far as for GOCO, this would fit in for the GOCO application as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This afternoon, I had a good chat with Heather about this project, and no big, I mean, no news to anyone. I was the dissenting vote last time. She cleared up a lot of things for me. I want to make it extremely clear that the kids and the program are not my issue at all. I I wish we could spend millions of dollars for kids' programs, but sitting in this chair, there's money attached to that, and that's my job is to take care of that. So the program, I support the program, I support the the philosophy you guys are are selling, and I think it's a good program. After after talking with Heather, I have a very much better grasp on the numbers. I don't know if how I was filtering them. I think they've been there's been some changes in the numbers, and looking at and being able to look at them makes them more clear to me. And I I filtered through the budget stuff. I'm still a little concerned on the budget part of it, but not as concerned as I was initially. And putting the putting the hundred down and reducing the payment, we're only doing the four hundred loan. I don't know if that was clear to me last time or if that was changed, but there's some things that are very, very much more clear to me now than were before. Saying that, I'm I still haven't wrapped myself, because it was just this afternoon, on all the figures, and when the when my city manager tells me that we're going to be tight for seven years, I am concerned. And I do believe I'm probably fiscally conservative and and fairly probably the leader of the pack in this group, I would say. So I do have those I do have those concerns. I I don't have them like I did before, but I still think I haven't wrapped my head around all the finances yet, and that's where I'm at right now.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I'm in favor of this project. The find the part I find attractive is that by securing eight hundred thousand dollars worth of grants, and the city only has to put up five hundred dollars, makes it very attractive to me. I think that's money well spent, so I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
I would I would like to commend the staff for all the hard work, as well as all the other people in the community who put a lot of work into helping us get to this point. I think this is one of those time times to where the opportunity is ripe for us to move forward with a facility like this, especially with interest rates being as low as they are at this particular time and the terms that we can get. I too agree with Rusty and with how tight we may be on the budget, but I think this is a time to where we should take that risk and try to move forward with a project like this, not only to benefit the kids in the community, but also the many grown adults in the community as as a whole, because I've been approached by several adult members who told me over the past few weeks that this facility would be a great benefit to them as well. So I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Beale?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in favor of this project. And again, I want to go back to the the use of this facility, and I want to make it very clear and communicate to the public and what what these folks presented a couple of weeks ago, that this is not just for hockey teams. This is for public skaters. This is for the City of Alamosa. This will help people in the valley. And I and I'm going to say it again, I I'm really looking forward to this facility in the summer months, in the fall, what what it can do down there. So I will be voting for this.
Counselor Stefano?
I also would like to thank Heinz, Heather, for your hard work, Mr. Pickett, Mr. Gronk, thank you for your comments. I still I was for this project from the beginning, and I still think it's a great idea. I think our kids need a lot of recreation, keep them off the street. Like I said before, we have a lot of problem with drugs in in our community. So hopefully, this will deter a lot of kids from finding something, you know, that they can really benefit from. And I think I used to ice skate when I was a kid. It's a great I love that, and I think it's I'd like to do it again. I'm going to go back in time. But it's a great project, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, and I'll just throw my two cents worth in. I'm in favor of this project as well. So let me clear up one thing in my own mind. The city is proposing to contribute approximately half a million dollars to this project, Heather. The city is is committing to half a million dollars to this project and is looking for eight hundred thousand dollars worth of grants or help from private organizations, AlpumaR, GOCO, whatever. And so in order for this project to get off the ground, dedicated funds have to be, well, set aside or dedicated essentially. And so that's really what we're asking council to do tonight, is set aside that half a million dollars over a seven or eight-year period with the hope that we can possibly garner four hundred thousand dollars in grants and four hundred thousand dollars in a loan.
It's so the city's commitment, if you're willing to commit five hundred thousand, of which one hundred is we currently have, and four hundred would be a short-term lease payment, and then the requirement is that the remaining amount, which is eight hundred, would need to come in from grants or private funding.
Thank you.
So?
Counselor Gregel?
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor. So if I understand this right, is there a contingent if we were to make some type of motion that just what you just said, Heather, would be contingent that these grants be put together? Am I correct, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another comment, I respect Mr. Johnson's being as conservative as it is, but I feel that the rest of those counselors have a responsibility to these funds, and even though we don't express it loud as you do, Mr. Johnson, but we still we still, you know, we are responsible for these funds, and and bottom line, too, as Robert put it, you know, the kids in this community, I think that's something that we need to look at, and when you balance money and kids, I think kids come up a little bit above the monies, even though sometimes it's not even there, so. Thank you.
The potential for growth of this community through a project of this size with help that may be garnered, I think, is clearly speaking to the forward-thinking and the vision of this council. I think it's important for us to realize that without taking some risk, we can't accomplish anything. And I mean, everything is risky, but I don't see the risk in this that that maybe Counselor Johnson did earlier. I I believe our finance department, Heather, staff, everyone has done their homework, and it's an opportunity for us to do something wonderful in this community, not only during the winter months, but during the summer months. And so I am also in favor of that. And so with that, I will entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
I don't know exactly what the motion would be, but I would entertain the the thought of us moving forward and giving staff guidance on moving forward with this project, if that's what we have to do.
And and so I would amend that just to include the dedication of the hundred thousand, the potential financing of four hundred thousand contingent upon the other eight hundred thousand being brought in from the outside.
That's exactly what I would like to say.
I second.
I've got a motion in a second, and I think we all understand the motion. Is there any further discussion on the proposed ice rink and multi-purpose facility?
Mayor, one more comment. This is a facility, as as Mr. Beale said, that is for the whole valley, you know, I think we caught some flack here in the paper the other day where Alamosa's doing this and that, and just as like the mayor said, we we take some risks. And the facilities that we build here are open to the whole six counties, and if you want to come and recreate here or use our facilities, they're wide open, you know, and we really appreciate the fact that people do come here and spend their tax money with us, you know, and that's, you know, I don't know how other way it is, but but we appreciate that. But I want to emphasize that these facilities, you know, even some of our own public works facilities and stuff that we lend out and help out to these other communities, is because we're there to work with all all communities, not not just for Alamosa.
I think it's all I'm going to add something myself. I think it's also important for us to realize that this project is being accomplished through the financing expertise of staff without asking for a tax increase to do this facility. So this is very innovative. This is something the city does on a regular basis. Counselor Gregel, you know that. This building right here was built without a tax increase for the most part. And so with that, I've I've got what a motion in a second? Start voting, please. Holly?
There's a.
There's a. I think someone for abstention accidentally hit abstain.
Okay, let me start voting again, please. Start voting. I'm having trouble with my machine. Hold on. Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried six to one with one counselor abstaining or voting no.
Thank you, counsel. And so we will move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Vieggo?
Yes, I I guess I'll go ahead and start here. As Heather said, we we met with the Recreation Advisory Board on the ninth, and some of the program items that were on there, of course, the ice rink, we discussed that. There was a a section where we're going to plant some memorial trees for our Valo Weldon is wanting to plant a tree in memory of one of our city councilmen, Lynn Weldon, and then friends at the library want to plant a tree in memory of Aaron Gilmore. Also, they discussed the the committee that was that was approved by council to put together an advisory board for the noxious weeds, and then a bunch of programs that are they're going to be busy this summer with a bunch of programs that are coming up, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Vieggo? Counselor Beale?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the school board meeting last week. Just some quick highlights there. They've been updated as to the different maintenance projects going around the district. I know they're doing a few things at the middle school, so the head of maintenance gave an update on that. They're also really trying to hit, and you probably see in the paper, an active lifestyle, healthy lifestyle with the students as well as staff, and they're coming up with some different programs, and they'll institute those next school year. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Marketing board meeting I attended last week. The highlights of that meeting were they approved to secure the loan for seven hundred thousand dollars and go after grant money for updating the motorway building. They've already secured architect, and I gave you last me or la after their last meeting, I gave you the potential drawings. We'll get something way more solid and something make sure it fits in their budget. It is a two-part project, to my understanding. They're going to do Part A right now and see where they're. They're going to do Part A right now and see where their funding is and dependent on the, on the grants they receive. That would be, I, I think that's, that's the majority of what happened in that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Do not have nearly as many as we have had in the past. If you look on the city council calendar, we do have for April 29th, the work session to, to discuss deer. Had a few questions from residents on what exactly we planned for that night. Essentially, we have some new staff. We have some new council members since this has really been looked at. So part of it is to just catch everyone up on what's been done in the past, what either worked, didn't work, what seemed popular and unpopular, those types of things. We will have, hopefully, we're confirming, we thought they were coming, Department of Wildlife representatives there as well. And it's a chance to then say, moving forward, are there some things we feel like we need to do and, and which areas do we want to explore and, and those types of things? So it's, it's kind of half catch everybody up. Let's, let's, let's look at what we've done and then also look at some areas if we feel like we need to do something. So that is April 29th. It is public and it is a work session. The other item that we are starting work on and it's, it's something we discussed during the, the retreat is creating a citizen task force to really help us look at water conservation, beautification, if there should be incentives to change the landscaping, the use, those different types of things. And so I've had some preliminary discussions with some residents who are interested in participating, but next week we're probably really going to roll out some items on Facebook and the website and, and press releases. So if you know of anyone who would be interested in, in helping us with that, obviously have them contact me and, and look forward to next week with some more publication on that. And I won't spend too much time on this because I know some of the councilors might touch on this, but just finished a week-long course with the Water Leaders Course. And we met every night last week from about six o'clock to nine, nine-thirty. I think it was a very worthwhile effort and, and very much worth our time. I learned a lot. I think it's given me a much stronger foundation as we move forward in what the city's efforts are. I also would encourage anybody in the community who has an opportunity to go through this. It's very worthwhile and I know some of the council members might weigh in on that as well.
Thank you, Heather. Any other staff announcements?
Counselor B. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just ask Heather, with this committee you're making on the water, can, can it include a council person?
Yes, as long as we don't go beyond two.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just want to just comment quickly on the water issue. I think it's, it would behoove us if we were proactive on conservation efforts so that we don't become California. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we will move on to our hats as the local licensing authority. We have Consent Calendar B. And the Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar B contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for a separate consideration. Tonight we have two items. Early Iron Club Incorporated Special Events Permit, September 4, 5, and 6, 2015, as well as San Luis Valley Arts and Entertainment Committee Summer Fest on the Rio Special Events Permit, June 5, 6, and 7 of 2015. Questions or comments on Consent Calendar B? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, quick comment then I'll make a motion. Both of these groups have done very, very good things for our community in the past. They employ the security. They take strong efforts to, to, you know, do the right things. And just their history makes, makes it easy to make this motion. So I, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further comments or questions on Consent Calendar B? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next up we have council comment.
Counselor Gregel?
Mayor, I'll start and, and I have several of them, so bear with me. Most of them are like Mr. B. Hill, related to water. The first one is last week, I think it was last week, Eric, they, they had the well rules and they're pretty much trying to, they've gone through it over and over and they're, I think they're pretty much close to the end and, and I don't know if Eric wants to comment on, he had a couple of comments to the group and I don't know if you want to comment on that meeting or not. And I, I think they're about ready, they're saying they're ready to get these rules passed and pushed forward, but that's been said for, I don't know how many years. So I don't know if that's correct and, and I don't know if you want to do any, have any comments on that, Eric?
I, I don't really, I would understand where you're coming from when you say that's been said many years, but I frankly do think that the end is nigh. There's been a few issues that have been holding up the state engineer from promulgating those well rules, primarily trying to figure out how to gauge and monitor sustainability in the confined aquifer, which is where the city's wells are located. And they have a, gone through a number of recent iterations on that and I believe at the meeting that the state engineer indicated he thought there might be one more meeting of the advisory group and then they'll likely be promulgating those rules in the next couple of months, I would expect. So that'll set the table and everybody's going to be responding to those, including us.
And just to tag on a little bit to that, at the staff level, we have been reviewing our needs from a water perspective to meet those rules and most likely within the next month, we would be having a meeting with city council to review some of those items.
On the second one, and as Heather mentioned, myself, Counselor Coleman and Heather, we attended this water leadership class and it was, I want to thank the people that put it together because each night they had a couple of, of different people presenting. And what it did, it gave you a basic understanding of, of who's, who's working with water and who's, you know, and who's the team that's working together with it. And I was asking Mike Gibson that maybe a summer class would be offered for, because I know some people can't, can't participate during the wintertime. So that's something that they're looking at. But it was, it is quite informative, you know. I, I sit on the Water Conservancy Board and, and even though I've been there for about six years, it's still, you're still learning with water and stuff, so. And I don't know if Mr. Coleman wants to add anything to that.
Sure, I just wanted to add a comment too. I would like to thank Mike Gibson and his entire staff for putting on that water training. I knew water was important, but goodness gracious, I didn't know how important it was until I attended that training last week. Did you all know that water is more precious than gold in the San Luis Valley? And it affects our economy in a huge way. And I was so glad to, to attend there. In addition, I, I want to, we're fortunate, we're fortunate to have, one, a city council member like Charlie Grego, who's very passionate about water and you can tell and who's unselfish when it comes to inviting other people to participate in he, and I greatly appreciate that, Councilman Grego. And also we're very fortunate to have a city manager who is proactive when it comes to these water issues. Heather and I both, we were looking at each other during the class, just trying to figure out if we understood everything, but we learned together and found different ideas that we can probably implement as we move for, forward with these water issues. So I'm just thankful and fortunate to have team members, city manager, as well as Councilman Charlie Grego, and having the support of our water community to learn all these different things that's going to help us as we move forward, as we face the challenges that, there's so much uncertainty about how things are going to go with water. So once again, just thank you all for inviting me and giving me that opportunity.
Okay. One other one, I, I sit on the Rio Grande Basin Roundtable. We had a meeting here yesterday and some of the stuff they, they talked about, the Rio Grande Forest Management Plan Revision, they're going around and they're, they're going to revise the forest plan. Judy Lopez, who puts together a lot of education when it comes to water and Rio Grande watershed conservation and stuff, she was, she, she does a lot for that. And whoever wants, you know, wants to sit on this, come and visit, you know, and sit on this, on this roundtable, you're more than welcome, you know. It's, you learn a lot from it and you meet, get to meet a lot of water leaders in, in this group. And then finally, this morning we met with Olivia Mendoza, who is the Director of Economic Development from the state. And she was in town giving a presentation to, to a group of economic people, I believe on Tuesday. And she met with myself and Heather and I really appreciate the fact that Heather participated because she really drew a, a clear picture of where we're going with the city as far as economic development and what we need help with. And she was really, really all ears and, and it's nice to see that the governor is sending somebody down here and is concerned about our economic development position, you know. And for the longest time I told her what they thought that we were part of northern New Mexico. And now we're, we're getting people to come down here and, and visit with us and stuff. So it's great to, to see that. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor B. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had a, a conversation with a constituent who had a concern and I wanted to bring it to your attention. This individual lives in the 12th Street area and, and this person said that he was very happy with our recycling center and that whole facility out there. But as we get into the springtime and summer and, and more folks are going down there and using the facility, when they're driving down 12th Street, some of their trash or yard waste falls on the, on the road, out of their pickup or whatever it might be, and they're not picking it up. So it's starting to become a little bit of a problem down there. I don't know what we can do about that, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick comment on the, or the ice rink. I think I've given everybody up here a headache over this. Staff especially, trying to clear up the financial end of it. Just want everybody to know, I'm, I'm part of the team. I'm in support of this. Council's in support. I'm ready to move forward and I'm sorry for the headaches I gave you. I gave Heather, I gave staff, I gave the club, but just probing questions and thanks for the help. Thanks, Charlie. He helped me a bunch.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I'd just like to thank staff for their help in selection of a new city clerk. The session went very well last Monday on interviewing all of those, so thank you for your help. Thank you.
And I guess I'll make a comment. I noticed that there was an article in the Pueblo Chieftain specific to the city being involved in the waste issue for some of the different, some of the different buildings that have gone down. And I think there was probably some misinformation that was reported on. The city basically had little or nothing to do with the elimination of that waste, whether it was the Sixth Street or the old Pink Elephant. That was all handled through the county and as far as we knew, that was basically an in-kind service provided by the county for the city. And we had absolutely no, no say in what, in where they dumped that. My understanding is that it was done properly and for the most part, there's been an inquiry through the state and that is being handled through our legal department, but there was nothing illegal done by the city of Alamosa in the elimination of that, of that waste. The other thing I wanted to say is that a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a week and a half ago, Sam Mamet came down and met with some of the elected officials and staff members throughout the valley and basically wanted us to form a, basically an Economic Opportunities Task Force for the entire San Luis Valley. And he wanted us to formulate this with different members in the community. And so Gabriel Aragon, who is the youngest elected official in the state of Colorado, myself, and Ed Crowther from the, Adam State University will, or are involved. We had lunch a couple of days ago and we are putting together names for this task force that we feel might, might give us a new insight in some of the economic opportunities that might be available for the valley through the university and vice versa. And so that's, that's something that's in this formulating stage. Our next meeting, I think, will be in July sometime. I've given Ed a couple of names and so we'll see how that, that transpires, but that's one of the things that I've done. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.